Okay, I will call this meeting to order. Welcome to our Williamsport City Council meeting. It's January 4th, 2024. We're in trade and trains of three or two. Wow. It's gonna be a fun year. Please rise for the invocation, followed by the flag salute and roll call. As we gather here tonight to conduct the business of our city, we ask for your wisdom and guidance. Bless us with vision as we begin the work in this new year. Guide our decisions so they may provide for the well-being, safety, and flourishing of our constituents. Lead us to act with justice, compassion, and courage, and unite us in seeking the greater good for all. We also pray for your blessing over the city, that it may be a place of prosperity, community, and peace as we go into 2024. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move to item three, approval of city council meeting minutes from December 14th, 2023. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions on the meeting minutes? Hearing seen on Mrs. Frank on the motion for item three.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. We'll move to limited courtesy of the floor. Item four, we've had one request from Mr. Bruce Huffman. Bruce, welcome this evening. If you would state your address for the record and then three minutes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bruce Huffman, 1000 Cherry Street in the city. I'd like to speak to, I believe it is item 11, the extension of the contract with Fish. I'd first like to say that I have no issue with Fish Real Estate. I do have an issue with the extension of a contract that I believe never should have been signed in the first place. You all know that I have spoken repeatedly about the Donated Dedicated Property Act. That's one thing. Attached to the original resolution were an extract from the third class city code that said that the city can dispose or sell real estate over $6,000 via auction or sealed bid. I don't see why or how it's necessary to have a third-party contract who's a real estate agent be involved in the selling of city property, particularly if that seller, that agent spoke to you all and/or the mayor in private about possible offers that came to you and you all decided in private to reject any offers. If that has happened at all, I believe you are in violation of the third-class city code. That is my reason for asking you to reject this offer to extend the contract. Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna jump around for a couple of items. We will go to item 10 first, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing execution of lease agreement between WALL and the city of Williamsport.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second, Mayor Slaughter. Welcome, sir.
Yes, good evening, President Yoder, Vice President Bider. Congratulations on your election. What you have before you is resolution authorizing execution of a lease agreement between Williamsport Area Little League WALL and the city of Williamsport. This is for the fields at Brandon Park. And this is very similar to the lease that we've had with them previously. As we all know, the last few years, the fields have been unplayable. And of course, we know that administration city council agreed to allocate money to upgrade the fields. And while those fields have been upgraded and WALL is looking to now get back on the fields at Brandon Park. And so that's what you have here before you this evening. This was reviewed in finance.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter, Mr. Allison, Mr. Bider. Anything from a commentary perspective from finance?
It's a pretty standard lease agreement that we've had in place before. There really is a whole lot to say about it. They, there is going to be payment for use of electric and water and telephone, whatever that means. I don't know. We're not gonna have anybody paying for cell phones, but but it's part of the old lease, I believe. So I don't know, we didn't discuss a whole lot about it.
We did not. We did ask that a representative from WALL be present this evening in case there were any questions that we had. One of the ones that I wanted to ask the representative from WALL, Mr. Deemer. Considering the project cost was under budget when we initially put this out for bid and when we proposed the project itself, we had some money left over in recreation with our ARPA funds. We wanted to make sure that everything was satisfactory for WALL's needs for this coming season. And if there was anything, and I'll say this very clearly, a wish list that we might be able to help make happen so that field is a grade A facility so they could possibly host state tournaments and the like.
Yes, thank you, Council President Yoder, members of council administration for allowing us to jump ahead and and do this because I do have another engagement. There are, I was waiting to discuss, you know, see a final number on what was left. And I've been talking with Mr. Livermore about things that, you know, if there was money left over, some upgrades that could be done. One that I can mention right now is we've noticed that there is electricity coming to the meter, but nothing running from the meter to the building in where the main concession stand is. We're working together to try to figure that out, but that is one thing that indicates that there could be an electrical issue and I mean, us as WALL, we were planning on looking into it, but if there is ARPA funding yet available, that would be one thing that could definitely help if necessary. We can absolutely get a wish list together.
Mr. Allison.
Hi, Ron. Randy. I have one question about the security of the field. I know there were some, at least one incident, maybe more in the recent past. Do we have a plan or does WALL have a plan working with the city to make sure the field can be secure under the strictures of the lease and everything like that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Allison. I have held conversations with members of the administration, Mr. Livermore, about things that we can do. We wanted to review the lease to see and probably talk with the city and possibly the solicitors and members of the council to see what we're permitted to do. There have been a couple incidences so far where youth on bikes during a mud event, you know, after a rainstorm, we're riding onto the baseball fields and softball fields, putting some pretty significant ruts. Luckily, we had some great community members step up and come down and help us fix that. There has been some reports that we have received from members of the community around the park of a homeless gentleman that is living in one of the dugouts. We did, I did talk to some members about putting some locks on the dugouts, especially now since it's winter time, the baseball fields aren't being used. However, we, after putting locks on the doors, it was only a four-foot fence that the gentleman needed to jump over to get back in. So I have talked with Mr. Livermore about maybe, you know, some upgrades of putting lighting in and around the facility. You know, possibly some gates directly in the dugout doors to prevent entry. And there's been a few other ideas, but we absolutely have every intention of protecting this asset that the city just put a lot of money into. I mean, as a city resident, I don't want to see this destroyed at all. This took a lot of work to get here and we're very appreciative of it and we're gonna do everything we can to protect.
Okay, thanks, Ron. We appreciate all the WALLs done to push this project forward. Thanks.
You're very welcome. We appreciate everything you guys have done to help this move forward.
Mr. Mackey.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, Ron, John Mackey here. First and foremost, I just want to thank you. I know you're not WALL in its entirety, so I want to thank you and everybody at WALL for basically resurrecting this program. What you've all done with it is just, it's simply amazing and I just wanted to say thank you for that. When we're talking about things that the field still needs, I know I had called Derek about this a month or so ago. Bleachers are definitely one thing that need to be addressed and it appears that maybe they were damaged or bent when they were moved during the construction. I don't know, but they're in pretty rough shape. So I do think if we're gonna have the crowds of people there that I assume we are gonna have this summer, we're gonna need new bleachers. And I, you know, I will point out again, you know, the project did come in under budget, but we all agreed to spend $800,000 on these fields. So if there's some money left over, then we need to spend that on the fields. And if that is extra security, if that's bleachers, if that's lighting, so be it. But we all agreed to spend $800,000 and just because it came in under that doesn't mean we shouldn't still spend that money on these baseball fields. So at any rate, Ron, again, thank you so much for everything you've done. And I know there's so many other people at WALL and I know I'm leaving a lot of people out, so let them know that we all say thank you. And I personally can't wait to see opening day there this summer.
Thank you for the kind words. Yes, we have a great team behind us that works very, very hard to support this monster that we have grown into and hope to continue to grow, to offer this Little League experience back home. This is the first time that actually a Little League game will be played in, within the city limits of Williamsport in close to a decade. And we're extremely excited for it. But yes, I do agree, those bleachers are in bad shape just from years of abuse. But we appreciate everything you have done, Mr. Mackey. You have been one of the driving forces behind this and I couldn't, couldn't thank you more for everything you've done.
Any other comments or questions? Ron, I would just echo the thanks from Councilman Mackey and I think from the rest of us. Thanks for your leadership at WALL. The group that you have involved, you guys are doing some great things and just thanks for the spillover effect that is having on the community. We're grateful for it. It doesn't go unnoticed. So I'll be talking to you in two years for four-year-old baseball.
We can't wait. I was just about to ask you when you're gonna be getting into the league. I know they're getting up there here soon. So we're we're again greatly appreciative of everything. We're extremely excited to play our first games and practices and and all that stuff and just get the sound of bats cracking and gloves smacking and, you know, getting all that going back at that park again. It's gonna be a great addition and I'll get all of you guys our opening day information and we'd love to have you all come down and celebrate it with us.
It sounds like a plan. All right, no other comments or questions? Mrs. Frank will the vote then for item 10.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. We will jump to, Ron, thank you very much and good luck to your next engagement.
Appreciate your time. Thank you, guys.
We'll move to item 12, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing execution of agreement between WSP and City of Williamsport Levy Relief Well.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second, Mayor Slaughter.
Yes, good evening again, President Yoder, Vice President Bider, members of council and administration. What you have before you is resolution authorizing execution of agreement between WSP and the city of Williamsport for the Williamsport Levy Relief Well Design Services. As we all know, WSP has been working with the city and the county, our state and federal partners for some time now on our levy system. We were able to secure with assistance of our federal congressional delegation, an $8 million earmark. It's been a long time coming. Of course, as we all know, there's been a lot of hours put into the levy. We're getting to a point now where we can start to see some of the fruits of our labor. So this is another step in that process to the recertification and the accreditation of the levy, of the levy, excuse me. And we do have oh, this was sent out. We did only receive one one bid and did come from WSP. That was the only one that came in. And so therefore we have them here tonight and there are two representatives from WSP that can go over some of the technical details. This was reviewed by Bill Scott, our city engineer, on the technical aspects of it, and Austin White reviewed the legal piece of it. And this was reviewed in finance.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Conversation in finance, Mr. Allison.
Well, we had a truncated conversation. We were probably about, I don't know, quarter or third of the way into the discussion when power went out at our house and power went out at the Mr. Bider's house. So we didn't get into the meat of the process, but you know, we're both grateful that there is a a company like WSP and GAZ who we've dealt with for the big, from the beginning of this process, who's very well-versed in everything Williamsport Levy related.
Thank you, Councilman.
What I would like to have explained a little bit was something that started in the finance committee meeting. If you could go over the milestones for us and the timetable so that way other members of council and the public has a little bit better understanding of how long this project is going to take and the involvement that the Army Corps of Engineers has in this project as well. Because that has a huge component to it and also the amount of time that it will take.
Absolutely. I do have a quick PowerPoint. Would that be helpful for me to share while we're on this meeting or better to just speak?
Yeah, I would say speak to it. If you want to turn that to us, we could take a look after the fact. We don't have a way to see that though, unfortunately.
Absolutely. And I think I've sent it before and also earlier today, so we'll make sure that you guys have a copy of the presentation. So I'd like to start with a quick a quick introduction to acknowledge the fact that this is a ongoing project. It's ever-changing and the involvement with the Army Corps is such a significant part of the process, right? Most recently, the SQRA analysis is what led to the recommendation to undergo a design of your underseepage system in order to get the most effective most effective solution for replacing wells or rehabilitating wells versus using the designs from the 1950s. We were expecting from the SQRA that they would provide for us a recommended water surface elevation in their results. And they haven't provided that. They did make the recommendation for design, but they didn't give us a new a new flood profile. So one, one aspect of this process is to establish that design basis. The base minimum criteria that the city needs to meet is your FEMA certification. And that is what the SQRA really analyzed against. It didn't consider any future projects with the Army Corps or anything like that. What I do want you to know is that we do have experience with projects that do get federally authorized, enter into cost-share agreements, and the process changes at that point. What we've proposed here does not include you involved in a federal project or participating in a cost share. But that is a potential pivot that could occur through this process as you guys move forward. The city recently entered an LOI, a letter of intent with the Army Corps for feasibility study, I believe. There's no timeline on when the Army Corps might appropriate that. And so I just wanted to make sure that, to double down on the point that this really does depend on the Army Corps is that everything we've proposed here in our milestones is designed to be engaged with the Army Corps frequently. And to keep in mind what is the best plan forward for the city. And if we see that there's something that changes with the Army Corps, we would bring that to you and we would, we would discuss how we would address those changes in real time. And that's part of the need for constant contact with the Corps through the process. So before I give it off to Mary for milestones, I wanted to see if there were any questions about that, if if there are any, anything you wanted to discuss there before we move forward. With nothing.
I think we're okay.
Great. So Mary, if you don't mind kind of walking us quickly through the milestones, I know you might have them next to you so you could walk through and we'll get the presentation over.
Sure. So thank you again, everybody for being interested in our flow charts that I know are pretty significant when you look at them. I know you cannot see them right now. Is that correct?
That's correct. We cannot.
Okay, so I'll try to visually describe these and hopefully it will get us. Yes, they are.
We can see them. They're in the proposal.
Oh, okay. We can give you page numbers in the proposal as well if you need a reference.
And so I'm on our first flow chart, which is on page 17. And it's entitled Underseepage Screening and Conceptual Plan. And consists of three milestones. So I'll give you just a minute to get there. All right, I'll go ahead and start unless you guys need me to wait for you to find that, that chart.
I think you're good, Mary.
All right. So this first flow chart where we are establishing and completing our underseepage screening and preparing a conceptual plan will consist of these three various milestones. The first milestone is going to be an important one. And as GAZ mentioned earlier, one of the first steps we're going to do is establish our design criteria. And that is going to be an essential component for us moving forward. So we're gonna work with you and agencies to help us establish the flood elevation that we're going to look at. And then, once we're able to do that, we'll be able to move forward with a bit more of our, you know, field work. Which for the milestone one will include sidewalk personnel interviews. We're going to be doing a underseepage screening. And then ultimately, at the end of milestone one, we will prepare a drilling program plan which consists of boreings that we will be targeting across the levy system. And this program will be submitted to U.S.A.'s for review. And their review on these plans and our experience can typically take three to six months. And there was some significance to this drilling plan being located at the end of milestone one that we touched briefly on. And GAZ, I don't know if you wanted to kind of reiterate that point?
Right. You'll notice that at the end of milestone one, all agencies are included in that review as all agencies have requested to review any plans prior to physical investigation of the levy. So we also will be submitting to your funding partners. You know, and obviously the Army Corps, PMA, FEMA, and just making sure that everyone's on the same page before we go out and we do the investigations.
Any questions regarding milestone one?
I don't think so.
Right. So milestone two, so once we have approval of the drilling plan and we have right of entry, we will actually mobilize into the field to complete the drilling, followed by the associated lab work in obtaining any other topographic data that might assist with our screening. And once we have that data, we'll update our underseepage screening evaluation. And then identify the target locations for underseepage controls.
So that means for new relief wells, right? For the translation?
Sorry. Yes. So underseepage controls. You know, in this case, we talk, you'll hear a lot about relief wells. There's other means to control underseepage beyond relief wells, which, you know, we've included in our proposal. We'll be looking at other cost-effective alternatives if they are suitable, you know, to these areas. And in conjunction to that, as GAZ was saying, you know, there's some environmental issues in some of these areas to consider. So those will be evaluated and considered also. And so at the end of this milestone two, field work, looking at options, we will be developing a conceptual plan, identifying where we think the problem areas are and what our proposed underseepage controls include.
And so that really kind of leads us through the concept planning of the project and with concurrence from all the agencies, a submission to U.S.A.'s agreement and approval from the city and everyone. We would then transition into design, which is where the next flow charts pick up. Am I correct about that?
Well, you jumped a little bit ahead. That's at the end of milestone three. That's okay.
Right, right. Yes, I did mean at the end of milestone three. I'm sorry. I thought we had traveled through. Yes, okay.
So that would be, yeah, the objective as Gaza sang at the end of milestone three, as we've worked through those issues. So any questions regarding any of those milestones?
The only question that I have, at the end of milestone three, for example, you've got the Army Corps and the city there, unlike in milestone one where you have all parties involved. Is it necessary that PMA and FEMA are involved at the end of milestone three?
So, oh, go ahead.
So I think the only reason we didn't include them there is because their biggest concern would be the design basis, the flood elevation. And so by meeting their review requirements earlier in the milestones, we anticipated that, but they are included in our concept design submissions, I believe. So they do get they're not explicitly stated. We can include them in that submission. I recognize the need to keep them abreast and I think my thought process was that the flood was their biggest concern, but sharing submissions with additional agencies is not a big deal. They had not specifically requested a review at that stage, though. They did request the review earlier on.
That's fine. I just appreciate the clarification.
Sure thing, yeah.
All right, well, I can move to the next chart if you guys don't have any other questions.
Go ahead.
Which is on page 22 of the proposal document. So again, you'll see, you know, we like our flow charts. And we won't go through every box, but you know, this design phase really begins at the end of milestone three. So you know, we've worked with you, we've worked with agencies, we've identified our target locations, proposed solutions, issues that we expect. And so with relief wells, we will have an additional phase of drilling. Because each new relief well will have a pilot hole completed at the location of the well. So that's how we will begin the design phase for the wells. We'll move into the drilling, the lab work. We will confirm our assumptions based on the additional data that we've obtained. And then prepare design documents, reports that again are submitted to the Corps and in conjunction with the city to make sure that the solutions we're proposing are consistent with what we looked at at the end of milestone three. So you'll see here in GAZ, I don't know if we want to go through each of these, but we'll move through the various plan set phases, including 35%, 65%, all the way to 95% prior to issue for bid plans and specs. So I know I took a big jump there in the middle. And so if there's any any points, GAZ, you think I should focus on or?
I do want to point out the ones, the ones that have an asterisks. We didn't include them in our cost because we assumed that we might not need those particular phases of the design, but we acknowledge that within under seepage design, those phases occur at these times. And so we wanted to make sure that um you understood that if something comes up, those those items may need to be visited, but they're not anticipated at this time. And that's why we did the asterisk and we have them shown, but they're excluded based on that footnote at the bottom of the chart. It might just be small font.
Any questions? Mr. Allison.
I just have one um under the the uh flow chart there, um number fourteen, this is legal survey. Um, what, what does that um the context for that? What kind of survey? Or what kind of legal things does that include?
So when it comes to construction, you know, we want to make sure we're establishing the the extents of the construction and we'll make sure uh right away and different property owners are identified. And so you know, that comes to the um areas of disturbance.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Our team from WSP, is there any other, um, anything for, to add from your perspective?
I would, I would add that um you know, we we propose the project to make sure that the city can meet their FEMA accreditation. We also incorporated that assumption that we would get more information from the Corps to give you an an upper bound, you know, potentially um that higher protection that either exists through the system already, because some of the system protects against a storm the at the magnitude of Hurricane Agnes, right? So in some areas, inherently, the system has greater protection. And so I I wanted to um just highlight the fact that there is an alternative consideration within the scope of the project in that design basis for us to help you get the best bang for your buck, if you will, right? To get the most protection that you're willing to get while getting your base minimum required protection. And so that's part of that, that design basis process. That's why those milestones, especially in the beginning, they're they're heavily loaded. And it's because we want to make sure that everyone's moving towards, you know, something that is beneficial and and also helps you if in five or ten years, a feasibility study from the Corps comes back and congressionally authorizes you that, you know, there's, there's opportunities to um to leverage that type of future potential, you know, as we move through the project. And those are things that my team is well aware of. They they remind me often because of their experience. And so I rely on them um with that to to keep in mind when something changes and to keep you guys informed. You know, that's, I think, some of the value that they offer me and that I would offer you guys in that regard.
Yeah. Thank you, Gauz. I might add that, you know, these flow charts look really nice on paper. And they look very, you know, clean and easy to follow, but uh levy works sometimes under surprises that you don't anticipate. So you know, when we find issues or anything, we will, of course, you know, inform you guys. And, you know, let you know if if we think there's a different path, you know, for any of these alternatives that we might think is better to pursue.
I think that's the one benefit of design that we didn't have while going forward with O and M and just replacing what the Army Corps had in place. So it does give some flexibility, but um, there's that coordination level. So that's where I have confidence in our team and and that's, I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew how many hands we have in the cookie jar of trying to make sure things are going, you know, going the right way and keeping everyone informed of what what makes sense in terms of what the chorus process is and how to get a levy um passed a four oh eight permit and constructed and certified and and all of that.
If you can answer the question, uh I believe he answered it in the finance committee, um and we won't obviously hold you to this because of the amount of hands in the proverbial cookie jar, as you mentioned. But what kind of a timeframe would we be looking at from for completion of this? Is it uh twelve months? Is it eighteen months? Could you enlighten us on that a little bit?
Was there more to the question? I'm sorry.
Uh, the the follow up that I had, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, then uh after they're done, just expanding a bit on how we plan to pay uh for this process, uh given the uh federal earmark and so on.
So we're, we're anticipating a three year timeline based on those review cycles from from the Army Corps. Um, each time you go out, you need a drill plan. So those those review cycles are are in place as well as uh review cycles for every stage of the design plan, so that thirty-five, sixty-five, ninety-five, those all have reviews with the Army Corps. So um with that in mind, it's, it's still a very aggressive schedule. And so that's where we've, we've projected the three years, hoping all goes well. That's kind of where we're at right now.
Yes, and as far as the uh congressional directed spending, sorry, I started coaching uh seventh grade basketball again. So uh we had our first game this evening and I yelled a lot. Um, so I, we connected with PMA and FEMA yesterday following the questions out of finance. Um, and PMA did confirm that we can get in advance up to fifty percent. Um, and then as the project continues on, then as there, as uh WSP was stating, they're meeting milestones. And then PMA, FEMA, the Corps, everyone's on the same page. We can continue then uh to get the allocation. So, but they can advance uh all the way up to fifty percent. Uh, so you know, assuming this passes tonight, we submit that to PMA, to FEMA, to the Corps. They see that we're ready to go. And then we can, they send it to the comptroller uh at the state level, so it flows down. And then they can advance us up to fifty percent of the uh of the earmark. So. So it's sort of a process. They got to see that we're on board. We send it to them, show them that we're on board. And then we work with WSP, we work every agency, as was mentioned. So the alphabet soup of a lot of back and forth. They were all here today. Uh, PMA FEMA was not, but the Corps was here. Uh, Senator Casey and others to discuss the levy. So uh they're very excited. We did let them know that tonight it was on the city council agenda for the relief wells. Uh, the Army Corps reiterated, they like to see, they really like how we're all on the same page uh between the city, the county, state, federal. So it's uh definitely helps us uh that we're all coordinating and working together, even with the South Williamsport side of it as well, that the county sort of spearheading. So it's
Very good.
Looking really good, yeah.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Allison.
I have one question. Um in the narrative at the, at the end of the uh presentation, it talks about groundwater adjacent to the left bank of Lycoming Creek.
Yes.
Fourth Street Bridge, and it's been sampled and documented to contain tripluroethylene.
Yes.
Is, is that an issue um of concern, not so much with the levy project, but um for that area?
So that area is a, is an EPA super fund site. It's referred to, I believe, as the AVCO Lycoming Plume or Textron AVCO Lycoming Plume. And it's been under remediation for quite some time, I think, um at least twenty-five years or so. And there are annual reports about the levels and um I believe there's active uh treatment going on. I I believe the the Sanitarian Water Authority is involved in that. And so my connection to that is that one of our hydrogeologists out of Pittsburgh has been the engineer, the hydrogeologist on that plume for nearly thirty years. And we were able to get him with a no conflict engagement to support us in this project when we were first pursuing the relief well design and the construction, because we we anticipated that pump testing. So I I worked closely with him in terms of the, in terms of the levy itself. During a flood event, his understanding is the directional flow of groundwater would actually push cleaner water through your wells. You wouldn't experience, um, you know, a polluting event during the flood event because of the way that the groundwater would travel through. But our concern is that we're going to be drilling, we would be pump testing, we would be generating potential waste materials, you know, and and we want to make sure that um we also consider the flow of those wells and and we also address the future pump testing for the city when designing the wells, because we did have to submit a permit, the city has a permit with the DEP in the region for pump testing your wells. You're supposed to pump test your wells every five years for for the wells that are in place. And all of the wells that are around that plume, the water has to be collected, it has to be sampled, potentially treated before it can be released. So that's quite expensive, right? And so if there's a way within design, if we're designing new wells for us to help reduce your, your burden in maintenance or to help um manage that better, that would be something that we would look at. And we also want to make sure that the water flowing out during those tests, you can contain it. Maybe there's a better way than having tanks come onsite every five years and things like that. So it was a consideration that because we know the information, we've experienced it through the construction process, the permitting for the testing and and all of that, we didn't want to neglect it in in the scope of the project.
Okay, thank you, Gauz.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions, Mr. Pelisi?
Thank you. Um, I do have a a question for you. So I'm, I'm looking at page twenty-nine of the proposal, and I'll read it for everybody that doesn't have it in front of them. I just wanted some clarity here. So the US Army Corps of Engineer, Bitability, Constructibility, Operability and Environmental Agency Technical and Safety Assurance Reviews. So I know you've listed these reviews in the process flow chart due to the potential schedule impacts, but you've not incorporated those into the provided costs. Correct me if I'm wrong, those were all the process events in the flow chart that had the asterisks. Is that correct?
So I believe, I'm double checking, yes. And I believe the reason for that is that I don't believe you pay us for that. Am I right, Mary? I think they pay the Army Corps for that.
Yes, that that is correct. And some of these reviews are not at this time definitively required. And so they're included, you know, for completeness in terms of, you know, there's a few options we can take where the path might require this review. Um, but that's not a certainty. And so it's been included to just kind of give you a complete picture of all the potential possibilities.
Okay, what I was trying to get a little bit of clarity on, uh, trying to find the page here, here it is on page seventeen. Or pardon me, I think it might be page twenty-two. Um, was that, yes, page twenty-two. Is that the next note says, we anticipated a safety assurance review to be approximately one hundred and twenty thousand dollars if required. Is that a hundred and, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars? Like you said, that would be paid out not to you, but to the Army Corps if required. And if so, what events would have to happen that would require this safety assurance review?
So we do have, that is the same one hundred and twenty thousand. And we have had some projects where we've completed our own. You'll see it's called a SAR, Safety Assurance Review. And depending on the federal project, those types of reviews are often required when there's life safety issues. And so we work with the Corps to help evaluate if a SAR review is required. And so we've had um some projects where SAR reviews are required by the Corps. And you put together a panel of various technical disciplines. And they, you know, evaluate and review the project to look to see if there's additional issues that have been overlooked. And so, you know, that is why it was left in here as a potential. Because we're not yet certain if it will be required.
Right. Thank you for clarifying that. And then I have one more question and knock on one. Um, so I see that as the results of milestone three in this flow chart, there are four different events um that are all asterisk as possible SAR review points within the flow chart. Am I correct in understanding that if anticipated, if required, is it one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to be paid in total? Or is it one hundred and twenty thousand dollars to be paid per event?
So, oh, sorry. I was going to chime in because I think I might have communicated that wrong. So in, I think, um in the flow chart, the asterisk items like the box eight, ten, thirteen, fourteen and twenty-two. The, the cost excluded has not been quantified. Those would be scoped as needed. If they're required, we would only scope, for example, where you might need topographic survey or where you might need a number of pyesometers. We wouldn't do it a broad breast um assumption now. It would really only be as needed. And similarly, the only reason pump station was kind of left in and and left curious was if we wanted to add a small lift station for those impacted wells. And and so that's not something that we've, we've, we've accounted for in cost. I believe that the one hundred and twenty thousand is relating to the SAR review that is a branch off between boxes twenty-one and twenty-two. And that is the only SAR item, I believe, that reflects that assumption that you had seen on twenty-nine. Am I right about that, Mary?
You are, you are correct. And so that number that you're also seeing on page twenty-nine that you referenced, the one hundred and twenty thousand is us reiterating that assumption so that they're all in one location.
Okay. No, thank you for clarifying that.
No, it's good questions.
I have no further questions.
And the other comments or questions from members of council? Gaz and team, just thanks for um for being here to kind of walk us through this, um taking our questions and thank you for the continued partnership we have with you. We're eking there, but I think we're kind of turning a corner here and and making some good progress. Um, the earmark helps. Um, so Congressman Keller, our Senate delegation, et cetera, very appreciative of that. Derek in the county, your efforts there. Um, but then your support WSP and team is 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 appreciated.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. President Yoder and and the entire council. Happy New Year. I jumped right in and didn't even get to say hi and thank you for having me.
Happy New Year. We're excited to do it also.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Frank, one um on item twelve, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Bider.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Um, let's hit item eleven while um Mayor Slaughter's been been upfront with us here.
Resolution authorizing execution of real estate broker services to Fish Real Estate.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second, Mayor Slaughter.
That's good evening. Once again, uh President Yoder, Vice President Bider, members of council administration, what you have before you is a resolution uh to extend a contract with Fish. Uh, nothing has changed at all, just that it was uh for one year. Uh, that year is up and is simply extends it for an additional year. Uh, none of the other terms have changed whatsoever.
Uh, this was also discussed in finance. Not sure how deep though, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Allison and Mr. Bider.
Um, yeah, we didn't have an extensive discussion about it.
Okay. Um, any initial questions? Uh, Mayor Slaughter, so this is just simply extending it because it ended. Um, we have not sold the facility. Um, and this is simply to keep them in place um for when that decision is made. Is that correct? Um, and this is simply to keep them in place, um, for when that decision is made. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So nothing's changed from that perspective. Um, okay. Any comments or questions? Okay. Here you see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Um, I don't think we have any other guests, so we'll just take it right through the regular order here. Um, so move to item five, Mrs. Frank.
An ordinance ARPA transfer ordinance number ten is final reading.
Sorry. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Uh, Mr. Scott. Happy New Year, welcome. Mr. Livermore is behind you. Welcome to you as well. He's like, ah, don't talk to me, man. Appreciate you too. Welcome, sir. How are you?
Members of council, Mr. Mayor. Um, so this was the transfer funds from, uh, Public Works contingency account to Public Works led the account in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars. The original contract was for a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars to, uh, Geo-Technical Associates for Levy Relief Well Testing Services. The original contract included work for twenty-six relief wells. Um, it was, uh, decided that that was not enough. They wanted to change that to a hundred two relief wells, um, for additional sounding, testing and sediment removal. That was the purpose of the change order.
Um, this is final reading, so we kind of went through this a little bit at our last meeting, but any additional questions from members of council? Here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion for item five, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Scott. Uh, we'll move to item six, Mrs. Frank.
Or ordinance ARPA transfer ordinance number eleven and first reading.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Mr. Jacoby, happy new year and welcome.
Happy New Year. Thank you. Good evening, council. Uh, Tracy, uh, put ARPA ordinance number eleven together before she left. Um, this is the changes that ca- council had approved through the capital projects and also to account for the, uh, police firearms and the fire support equipment. Um, this was brought before the finance committee.
Thank you, Ms. Jacoby. Um, Mr. Allison, Mr. Byder, any initial commentary?
No, we had an extensive discussion during the budget on all of this, so.
Any, any comments or questions? Um, so just, just to clarify, so this is literally just reflecting um, changes from what we made from budget last year, correct? So from capital projects.
Capital projects, having ARPA pay for those, uh, instead of coming out of the general fund.
Um, a, a couple of just, I guess, quick questions related to a couple of the, the, um, where we're pulling money from. Um, so I don't, first off, don't see any change to the ball fields from running part, John. Um, which I think from your commentary and I think from ours, I think is what we wanted to see. So, um, so that is still there. Um, the Greenway Trail Connector, we had, um, some funding in there for the match. Rhyme me of where we're going to do that match from now that we're taking that out of here. Do either of you know the answer to that? The Greenway, yeah, we did, but was, I think we made that change early last year.
If I'm correct, and I can double check, the Greenway Trail Connector, I think is, um, where we were putting from Basin Street down to the River Wall Connector. And we don't have those funds yet. That's still, we made a earmark request for that. Um, and so that project is sort of on hold. It's on the shelf.
So it's a timing.
Right. So we just don't have anything to do. That's, it's just not happening right now. So we'll see what we get, um, between, in an old city area, we put a number of things in between us and, and like coming college for that old city and that was included in there. So I think it's a, I think we're short about five hundred thousand right now.
Okay, gotcha. Um, and then the, the small business development revolving loan program, um, we had a lot left over in that. Um, I take it we don't want to revisit maybe doing a second round of that in twenty twenty-four?
We talked about that, um, the difficulty would be if we open it back up using the ARPA dollars, if they don't have things ready to go and then we get stuck by the end of twenty-four. So I, I think it, we can reopen a program, but I think we need to discuss where we'd want to fund it out of. I think the businesses and nonprofits like that program, um, just talking to Tracy in U H Y, there was a little concern with the timing if we use the ARPA money. Um, just in case if the businesses got up against it or the nonprofits and then the administration and council, we'd be stuck at the last minute scrambling to reallocate. So I think we want to stick with the program and I talked to Kevin Mackey as well, and I think he has some ideas.
Okay.
Um, that's how we can continue to fund, but not using the ARPA. Uh, so we don't run up in any timeliness.
Yep.
Concerns.
Okay. Uh, that's helpful. I appreciate that. Um, Heather, between now and next meeting, could you send us an updated overall budget reflecting these changes and what it would look like? Um, just so I can understand, I, I haven't had a chance to put the numbers in, just to kind of understand holistically where we will be at. Cause I know there was a number that we have to have left. This is putting a dent in it, but.
Yes, just, just keep in mind that all December's bills aren't posted yet, nor is the interest for December.
Yep.
So when you're looking at it.
Understood.
Okay.
No, I understand. I, I certainly understand. Um, and then I think finally, we, I think we kind of talked about this during budget last year. I, I think it would be helpful. I don't know if it's a, if it's a work session. I don't know if it's a committee meeting. I don't know if it's an item at a full council meeting, but I think it will be good to just have a general conversation update on our entire ARPA budget, um, to understand where things are, what we expect to be moving. Some potential things that we may see we need to move. Um, I think redevelopment authority, land bank, levy, like some of those bigger ticket things as well. Um, I don't know if that's going to be feasible in two weeks, but, um, maybe as we get into February. Um, I think that would be good to do sooner than later, so.
Yes, we can do that. And the quarterly reports do it end of January as well, so we'll be able to get that to you and know exactly where we stand. So, um.
So maybe the first cycle in February makes a lot of sense.
And Heather can get you updated one as of now, but then we'll have another one updated, uh, by the end of January, uh, that's required reporting, so.
Okay.
But yes, we can definitely meet to go over and see where we, you know, the remaining funds and what we want to do. So I agree.
Yep, awesome. Okay. Sorry. Uh, any other questions for members of council?
I think President Yoder, just add one more, just, uh, just for the public, why we're talking about this, because December thirty-first of twenty-four of this year, we have to have all of the ARPA dollars allocated, um, just as a reminder. So not to you, I'm just saying to the general public. Um, and so we are running up against some timely things here. If, if the dollars aren't going to move, we need to know and then we can, council can reallocate, um, and then expended by twenty-six. So that's the, that's why we want to meet sooner rather than later and get up, get out in front of this. So.
Absolutely, absolutely. Good clarification. Any other comments or questions? Okay, here you see none. Mrs. Frank, um, item six in first reading.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. We'll move to item seven.
An ordinance transfer ordinance number ten in first reading.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Mr. Livermore, happy new year.
Happy new year. Good evening, members of council. What you got before you is a tran- uh, transfer ordinance number ten. Um, the following revisions is twenty twenty-three at thirteen budget. Um, moving two hundred thousand dollars from the repro- re-appropriating surplus to street resurfacing rehabilitation. Um, reason for this is, um, we had this year's paving uh, list went out, we paved, we came in two hundred thousand dollars more due to the fact that we had to, last year, early on, we were trying to get, we usually use C D, CBDG money. And some of the roads that we tried to get paid through them, we couldn't get done because they needed environmental reviews done. So fortunately, we didn't get that this year. That's going to be thrown on this year's list, but I needed two hundred thousand dollars to cover the paving list for the season. Uh, this was reviewed in finance. And any questions?
Our members of finance, any insight into the commentary from Tuesday?
Just the, the, um, the reason why the environmental study wasn't done, uh, Mr. Livermore did, um, explain that a little bit farther, uh, so everybody is aware. It was just, it was due to the, um, resignation of our former city engineer, John Sanders, not being available to do that study for us.
Any additional questions from other members? Okay, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on item seven in first reading.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Scott. All right, we'll move to item eight, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to approve CGB solution to provide technical assistance to city council.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. All right. Um, so what you have in front of you is a resolution to approve, um, an agreement between CGB Solutions. Um, this is our, um, our, our, our local, um, friend here, Chris Bird. Um, I, I engaged him on the end of last year when we, uh, were notified that we would need to find a different solution to cover. Um, the Manning of our streaming of council meetings, um, had a conversation over the break. Um, and he provided a proposal, um, to us, what you have in front of you, um, two hundred fifty dollars a meeting. Um, he is simply providing the staffing of this, um, from clarification from Chris Black. Um, he will handle setup and committee meeting still, as he's been doing. Um, Chris has the dates for all of the meetings this year. Um, that's, that's the, that's the gist of it. Um, with the meetings we have left comes to six thousand dollars. Um, not including if we need to do any kind of special meeting, um, anything like that. Um, that's under the budgeted ten thousand that we carried, so we're under budget in twenty twenty-four, kind of start out the year. Good one. Um, that's the story. So I know this was reading finance. I don't know if, I, I could not make it. My apologies. I don't know if this was discussed any further, but.
Not really.
I figured.
I figured to clue us in.
I figured.
But, um, yeah, we, we did talk, um, the two fifty per meeting. Um, yeah, I estimated maybe seven grand, you know, with extra in that neighborhood.
Yep.
So, yeah, same ballpark.
Any, um, any questions? Uh, Chris comes recommended from a few members of council. I'll, I'll note that, um, so. Okay. Uh, here you can see no questions. Uh, Mrs. Frank on the motion for item eight.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. First look forward to working with you this year. Um, we'll move to item nine, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution for the city of Williamsport authorizing issuance of a sale of tax and revenue anticipation note.
Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second, Heather.
Good evening.
Back.
Uh, this resolution is for the tax anticipation note, uh, two million dollars, just to get this in place in case the city needs it. Um, this is, was through M and T. It mirrors what twenty twenty-three's was. And this was also brought before the finance committee.
Thank you, Heather. Any insight into the, any commentary from finance?
It's pretty much, you know, standard. We do this every year. Um, I did note that in the, um, the agreement, um, um, they stated that it, it today's interest rate, should we borrow the money, it's right now at six point seven five percent. So it's out of incentive why we, we don't want to use that unless we absolutely have to.
Absolutely. Any comments or questions? A couple from me, um, a- and this is kind of tying back to some conversations we had before your time, um, Heather. Um, have we engaged other banks to shop around for like what our rates look like? Or are we? I, I know we've used M and T for a while. Um, I know in the past, we've had some other banks that had interest in working with us in avenues like this. Did we engage any other banks?
We did not. I went with Tracy's recommendation, reached out to her contacts through M and T. Um, she has a very good rapport with them, so that's where we stayed.
Um, and, and I know Tracy's no longer with us. I know part of what she was finishing up um, was everything else related to the final audits to get us up to date. How are we looking there? Cause I, I, and the reason I ask that with this one is I know in the past, that's been a question. Um, not only with just our ability to maybe get this, but even working with other banks in the future. So how's that all looking?
The, uh, audit papers were sent to the auditing firm for twenty twenty. I got confirmation this week that they are working through twenty twenty, uh, the month of January. Um, I'm not sure if Tracy had sent them the working papers for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, but they are complete, um, on, from her end.
Okay.
And if not, will be sent to them to proceed.
So she, she completed everything.
She got through everything.
From sending a few things to people, we're up, we're caught up one hour and it's up to the auditors to finish their scope.
Yes.
Okay. That's good. Do we have a timeline on when their scope for the rest is going to be completed?
I do not. I could reach out
Yeah.
to them and find out. I know they were trying to get through, uh, twenty twenty by the end of January. And then probably a, a month again for each
Okay.
year, maybe more now that they're heading into tax season.
Okay.
But I can reach out to them and see if they can pinpoint a date.
I- i- if you would be so kind as to do that and then let us know what you find out, I think that would be of interest, at least to me, and probably I think at least the members of the finance committee, maybe most of us. Um, that's been a little bit of a pain point for us, at least in my entire time on council. Um, and so I'm, I'm glad to see that be nearing, um, nearing being gone. Um, and then I would just, um, as we get into twenty, I know it's a year away, but as we get into the end of this year and into twenty twenty twenty-five, um, as our audits ideally are up to date, I would encourage us to look at, engage other banks. Um, you know, M and T's great. Um, but with, with where interest rates are, um, and, and some past interest, I, I don't think it's a bad idea to just see, let's see what else is out there. Um, especially given, you know, the size of note we, we get annually, um, um, and, and the amount of, of business we do banking, it may not be a bad thing to see what else is out there. So I would encourage you to, to please do that be- between now and next year.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions from members? Okay. Uh, here you can see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion for item nine.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelisi.
Yes.
Mr. Byder.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Um, we'll move to item thirteen, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing an agreement between Williamsburg Bureau of Fire and Essential Personnel.
Sir, a motion in a second.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Our patient, Chief Hanks. Happy New Year, sir.
Happy New Year. Um, President Yoder, Vice President Byder, members of council, before you is a resolution, uh, to enter, enter into an agreement with essential personnel. Um, if you're familiar with power DMS that the police department uses, it's very similar to that. Um, for us, we've been using power DMS with, in conjunction with the police department. But for us, the only thing it really did that it served us was a place to digitally put our rules and regulations. So, um, with emergency essential personnel, we're able to use policies, excuse me, uh, include our policies and procedures on there. Um, it tracks and, uh, the credentials and qualifications of each member. Um, does evaluations, it has a health and wellness, uh, part to it, um, part to it, um, which also tracks incidents uh where firefighters are injured or have been exposed to toxic atmospheres. Um, and then there's also a resource library that's included with it. Um, this was brought before uh the finance department discussed and um, the twelve month contract is not to exceed four thousand four hundred and forty six dollars.
Thank you, chief. This went to finance. I don't know if there is anything to add, Mr. Allison, Mr. Biden.
Hmm, not really.
Thank you both. Um, any additional questions, comments from members of council on this item? Okay. Hearing seen on, this is Frank on the motion for item thirteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Biden.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move to item fourteen. We've got two certificates of appropriateness, one for Ways Garden um for sign installation at entrances. Um, and then another one for our nine thirty, nine thirty two Vine Avenue for green trees development. Um, were related to aluminum siding. Um, is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Skip, welcome, sir. I appreciate you being here to support this. Um, any, anything to?
Nothing really unusual. But good evening, members of council.
Happy new year.
You're happy new year and everybody. Nothing unusual other than the Vine Street property. It would, part of it was the uh reissuance of a certificate of occupancy that had expired before they were able to begin their work. So we're asking you to reissue that as part of this and that uh they then picked out the colors, and the one item that was left out for review later on is the possible removal of a parking structure to the rear of that property, but nothing out of the ordinary.
Thank you, Skip. Um, are there any um comments or questions from members related to the certificates of appropriateness from the hardware? Okay, um, this is Frank um on the motion for item fourteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Biden.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Janice, I think we got everything aside from fifteen.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, item fifteen, except for filing our water and sanitary authority minutes from November twenty, or November fifteenth, two thousand twenty three, and our controllers report from October twenty twenty three. Is there a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions related to the minutes? Hearing seen none. Mrs. Frank on the motion fright in fifteen.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mr. Biden.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Item sixteen announcements. I'm going to first announce we're going to have an executive session following in relation to uh legal uh matters and personnel. Um, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be on Thursday, January eighteenth, seven P M here in Trade and Transit Two. Um, our upcoming committee meetings are in the process of being advertised, so we will announce them for our next meeting. Um, I opened the floor for comments from city council. I just wish everybody um, happy new year, including our constituents and, and citizens of the city. Hope everybody had a great holiday. Um, I'm looking forward to a hopefully fruitful twenty twenty four with all seven of us, the five of us that are here, but um, our two colleagues cannot make it tonight and the administration. Um, I know we've uh kind of the end of last year, talked a little bit about um agreeing, disagreeing, et cetera. Uh, we're going to continue to do that as we get into twenty twenty four between individual members of council um with the administration, et cetera. Um, I, I look forward to that because I think it'll, I'm hoping it will be fruitful. We'll find some common ground um and come up with some really good things for the city in that process. Um, so I'm looking forward to that with all of you. Derek, looking forward to that with you as well. Um, so I'll get off my soapbox here. Any comments from members here? Any comments from members of the administration? Any comments from members of the public? Uh, if you would uh come up, uh, state your name and address for the record. Um, per our cardified ordinances, you have three minutes. Um, and I would uh welcome you, sir, and wish you a happy new year.
Thank you. Good evening, Tom Adams, Williamsport. Um, I have, might be I'm beating a little bit of a dead horse. My comments are about the December ninth protest. Um, and I think, I know, don't get me wrong, I don't point fingers at anybody. I think everyone here does the best they can as far as, you know, governing and um doing what they think is right. And um, I don't think there was any ill intent meant, but we saw these protests across the nation. And um, I think it's, it's geared towards because it's Christmas season. And most people involved with these protests, maybe they don't really celebrate Christmas. On yet, and on another part of that is that uh it seemed, in my view, it seemed to target the business district. And in the time of year when businesses are looking to make money, I think those businesses should have been asked their opinions, you know, if there's, that street should be closed. I went downtown at that uh twelve fifteen, and there was no one on the street. And I understood that petition was supposed to, they were supposed to be in the streets, not on the sidewalks for that three hours, and they weren't. Um, and I'm not, you know, I think most people meant, well, it wasn't meant to cause trouble, but there is a coalition of this stuff going across the nation, where I think there is ill intent, but not in every area, you know, so I think we have a lot of honest people that get caught up in some things, and it's just uh, good for the country. Um, because honestly, we're a Christian nation. We're founded on Christian principles, and it doesn't mean that we're right all the time, doesn't mean that we can uh dictate to other people. But when it comes to uh any area for, for protest or for uh uh, you know, for, for viewing your points in a peaceable way. Um, it's just not a blanket uh agreement. There, there are plenty of other places in the city. I think this could have been done if they wanted to close down the street. And honestly, they could have just stayed on the sidewalks and maybe not really bother people from their shopping or, you know, driving traffic. Um, or have a designated area where maybe you had a small block where it wasn't affecting any, any business. I mean, we wouldn't allow protests to go on, on in a residential area. Our constitution doesn't allow for um the rights of majority or anyone to be trampled on by others when, when the rights of, of um ci- citizens are, are stopped because we, we uh stop the rights of the, of free flow of commerce and free flow of traffic. Um, when it wasn't really agreed upon by those people in the, in the affected area. Now, people say, well, you have Christmas parade. Well, those businesses agree to that. Doesn't shut their businesses down. It actually enhances. I mean, that's a community thing.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other comments from the public? Okay. Uh, any comments from the news media? Who's behind the camera? Uh, it's a motion in a second for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone, and happy new year.